Call the order of the Seminole Airport Authority for Tuesday, January eighth. Roll call please Jay.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Bill Wollman. Tim Poplin.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Larry Church.
Sure.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda. Roll call please Jay.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the airport authority? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If we could now please call the order of the gas authority. Roll call please Jay.
John Kramer.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Wollman. Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda. Roll call please Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yeah.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the gas authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Show them.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We can please call the order of the Seminole Utilities Authority? Roll call please Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Wollman. Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda. Roll call please Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Show them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We can now please call the order of the regular meeting of the Seminole City Council. Roll call please Jay.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Bill Wollman. Corey Crabtree.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
If we could please stand to the place of the nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Savior, man, informed by the divine teaching, let us cherish thy our Father, your holy name, our Lord and our King, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily glory, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and release us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever.
At this point, can we open up a public hearing for the purpose of enabling comments regarding the Seminole City's possible application to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Grant, Economic Development Infrastructure Financing Program, for funding assistance specifically as related to the expansion of the Parks Manufacturing and potential job creation. The funding would be used by the City of Seminole to purchase and renovate property at the corner of Bourne and Strather to house the expansion. And that's the USA tank, correct?
Yes, same thing.
Please step forward.
Good evening. Uh, most of you know that Parks Manufacturing has been a solid employer since they opened their business here more than ten years ago. Um, we are welcoming the chance to help them with an expansion project. Um, the Department of Commerce Economic Development Grant will allow them to expand their business and hire at least twenty-nine jobs in the next three years. Commerce will need a commitment, dollar for dollar, uh, to the amount of the grant. In this case, we are requesting one million from the Department of Commerce, and Parks Manufacturing will match the grant funds in startup costs. With the grant funds, the city will purchase the property, uh, which includes two buildings and several acres of industrial land, and make the property habitable for their expansion.
Will it get painted?
Yes, that's part of the, that's part of the one thing that they've said, probably both.
Are there any questions concerning that, or comments?
What else are we doing, besides painting the buildings, are you? Is that it?
No, we're, I mean, if, we would make them both either habitable or put them on the ground. Uh, that's, they're not in good shape to house an expansion now, so, uh, there, there are some plans coming.
Yeah, so, so the grant will go to refurbish the buildings entirely. They'll be brought up to code, uh, they will not look anything like what you see there now. Now, the shape of them and perhaps the height may be the same, but they'll look a lot different.
And the matching funds come from where?
The matching funds come from the company. The grant money is a pass-through from the Housing and Urban Development, or HUD as we know it. So it passes through in a block grant to the Department of Commerce.
They have agreed to that.
Say again?
They have agreed to that.
Uh, yes, the, yeah, this is, this is part of the application. The application has not been submitted yet, but one of the things that we have to do in the application process is have a public hearing and explain that this grant money, uh, that's coming through HUD and through the Department of Commerce is to be used to provide employment opportunities for low and moderate income persons. So, uh, one of the things that they'll be doing is fifty-one percent of the jobs that are created will be offered to low and moderate income persons, so, uh, what were made available to the, the low and moderate income persons. So, uh, it's a great deal, we've, we've used it before. Um, one of the caveats in the grant is that a governmental entity must retain ownership of the, of the building and of the improvement for the useful life of the, of the facility. So, uh, there will be a lease back to the company, but the, the bottom line that you're trying to get to is that, uh, the, the match money will come from the company. Now, they may ask for us to help, uh, I say us, either SEDC, the city, some, someone may be asked to assist in asphalting, uh, the road there in front of their, uh, in their building, but that has not come to pass yet. We don't have any, anything approved. If it, if it is asked, then we will bring it back before you and/or SEDC or who's being asked, so. Uh, this is just kind of a, this is, we're just trying to get the grant turned in to kind of earmark and put in their pipeline at the Department of Commerce that, hey, there's a million dollars that we need to hold in reserve for Seminole until this gets through the pipeline.
Question here?
Sure.
That, that was part of my question is, it's not a, it's not a done deal if, if we approve this and, and apply for it, is it? I mean, what's the chances of it going through or not going through?
Uh, that's an opinion, and I'm gonna give you my opinion. I think that it's probably, uh, uh, I'd say ninety-eight point nine percent.
Is that a yes or a no? A good chance it'll go through?
The new secretary of the Oklahoma Department of Commerce is Blue Wave's banker out of Tulsa.
Will they oversee the building of, the, the structural building, the improvements and all that?
No, we do that.
SEDC?
No, the city of Seminole.
I move to approve, if there's no more questions.
Does, does this property join the existing Blue Wave property?
Yes, it will, it will abut the existing Blue Wave, yes. Good question. And part of their, part of the site plan that I have seen actually has a, a road going between the two. So they're planning on transporting pieces of, of, of boats between the two operations, so.
Without going on the city street?
Right.
So is it like an alleyway or something, because there's houses between Blue Wave and?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me make sure everybody clear. The road that goes north-south in front of the south building of USA tank currently is a platted street. Okay? So, in, in effect, we've got that as a street already, so if they surface that, it will be a city street unless you all decide to abandon that street. So currently, their plan is to do the parking, uh, for this building on the east side of the city street running south off of Strather.
The city won't have to pay, will they, without expense?
That's, that's why I was alluding to earlier, they, there may be a formal request, but when it, when that happens, or if it happens, it'll come back to you. That's not, uh, not necessarily a part of what we're doing in the application.
So there's a good chance that the existing buildings will come down?
Uh, well, all that I-
Ninety-eight point nine percent?
No, no, uh, actually, I would put it the other way. There's a ninety-eight point nine percent that they'll stay up, but they will be gutted, stripped down, and reskin, and, and rewired, and replumbed, and, and the concrete inside of it is pretty pitted, so I think they'll float, probably float a new floor in there. Uh, I've seen all the estimates that they've done, uh, to refurbish the buildings, and none of them speak to tearing the buildings down, they're more refurbishing.
That building on the south side of, uh, Strather's area, is there enough property there to do anything with?
The south side?
The north side, I'm sorry, the north side of Strather's, there's that big thing still building where it is.
So-
And there don't appear to be much property with that, I, I don't know.
Yeah, uh, you mind if I respond there? Uh, the, the plans that I have seen, that will be another addition to, uh, getting, they call it vertical integration. And what that means is, sometimes they, I'm giving you an example, this is not specifically what they've said. Uh, sometimes, sometimes they have to buy furniture, like chairs that go in boats, and so they would move that chair manufacturing into that building, where they're, right now, they're buying it out of Minnesota. They will integrate that into their production and move it to the north side of the Strather Boulevard, okay? So, they're intending on using that north building in addition to the south building. So both buildings are in the project.
But, I guess the city will go through there and clear all the trees and junk and stuff off that property on the south side? South side, you know, it's growed up and they ain't gonna tell you what you find in there when you-
Oh, we know what's in there, yeah, we've been there, done that. We did it when, when we built Blue Wave Factory, so, um,
But they'll-
Now, are you talking about, uh, are you talking about the, around the building currently?
Well, that whole piece of property, it's all growed up, you know, who, who's gonna clear that off? SEDC or City of Seminole?
Yeah, so, they'll, they'll have control of the property, and we'll ask them to do that.
Okay.
Uh, the, all of it will be leased back to them, so whatever's under fence for them will be, need to be compliant with the zoning.
Any other questions or comments? We don't actually need a motion. It's merely just a public hearing on that.
I-
So if there's no other questions or comments, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the city council? I'll move under resolutions. Resolution number one, consideration of possible action to approve resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one, a resolution committing to apply for economic development grant through the Oklahoma Department of Commerce.
Push it to approve.
Second.
Roll call please Jay.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution number two. First of all, I'd like to recognize Carl Odom, the commander of post two oh four, as well as some of the other veterans here. Um, before he's gonna speak, we have resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash two, is a resolution proclaiming the City of Seminole as a Purple Heart City.
Before I start, I'd like to present you all with a pen. We had a, I think so, Vietnam Veterans Day penny ceremony, and I had a bunch of them left over, which you did not attend. He is one of our members.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I will bring people by your right.
Oh, you're too kind. Thank you.
Okay, what a Purple Heart town is. It recognizes all veterans killed or wounded in action. And what we would like to do, it was brought up to me, is turn Seminole into a Purple Heart community. Where it will show pride in our veterans, which a lot of us are in this town. And we are asking that you approve it, and we will see about getting the signs done up, because I have somebody willing to pay for them, and put them up in our six entrances into Seminole. And we're just asking for your approval.
It specifically states on the proclamation that we, as a Purple Heart City, that we encourage the citizens of Seminole to show their appreciation for the sacrifices of the Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage, and to show them the honor and support that they have earned.
I'll move to approve that we've become a Purple Heart City.
I'll share.
Roll call please Jay.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
I've seen those signs coming in different towns, and I wondered what that was, so, thank, thank you for bringing that to our attention, that's a yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's like the old adage, the freedom is not always free.
Hey, Mayor, can we take a quick picture?
Yes. Let me show you.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, have our guys come up, and we're gonna have the mayor. Consistent with the thunder cap and over-
Well, I, I felt, um, I feel bad now.
Probably colors.
He looks the same color.
At least I wore that bowl winning t-shirt. It's almost winter.
All right, on three, one. All right, one, two, three. Excellent, thank you, Shroo. Congratulations, dude.
Under reports, city manager?
Yes, sir. Now that our, uh, our mayor of so many years is a short timer, I want to take the liberty of extending this meeting a considerable amount of time. I'm gonna take a lot of time on my, on my report. No, uh, I, I guess the first thing I need to say is, uh, Stu Phillips' passing was a shock, I think, to everyone. Uh, what a, what a void that has left in our community. He has always been more than fair to the city and, and encouraging us in many ways, yeah, both obvious and not so obvious. And, uh, man, I just wanna say, you know, I'm really sorry to the family and, and all those that loved him. He's gonna be missed, and I, I don't, as, as always, when we lose someone like that, you never quite know who's gonna step up to fill those shoes, but, and it may be a, you know, a whole group of people that try to do that, but, um, I know that we've got great people that are going to attempt to help us close the gap that Stu has left, so I, I wanna start there. Uh, Snowman Wonderland, uh, was another big success this year. Our guys, uh, city employees rallied, and, and with the help of the Lions Club, we got the, the lights who were in extreme disrepair this year. Uh, we got them up and going, and, and it ended up being a, a real success, and I, I wanna just say that I appreciate our guys spending all the hours that they did. Uh, I know they had other duties, and those other duties didn't just go away, they just kept stacking up on them. So not only did they have to take care of doing the maintenance on the lights, they, they still had to go do their other regular scheduled duties, and, uh, they did fantastic, so. Uh, we do, I think we've got a better solution for next year. We've visited with the Lions Club. A- as you're probably aware, the Snowman Wonderland building behind the, uh, pink laundry is nearing completion, and that is actually gonna be where our, our displays are stored. And, uh, I think there's been an agreement reached that we'll actually have a part-time employee, more than likely that's gonna be paid through the Lions Club, that will be doing year-round maintenance, so that when we take those out to set them in the, in the ground, they'll be working. We won't have to go back and go piece by piece, bulb by bulb, and try to repair those things, so. That'll be a huge help and a load off of, uh, Shelley, uh, bless her heart, she, I don't know how many hours, uh, Shelley Robertson spent, but it, it had to be a hundred, probably. Um, so, we're very appreciative to the way that our gang rallied around that and made it happen.
I've had a couple people ask a question. Are you still able, if you want to buy, have one built, or whatnot?
Absolutely.
Who do you contact?
Uh, Neil Craig or Ernie Willis is a good start for that. Uh, now, one thing that we have done is we are going to a straight LED light rather than the incandescent that a lot of them are now. Those pull so much more voltage that it's actually beginning to corrode the, our underground wiring, so we're going back with straight LED lights, which are a little bit more expensive, so if they've had one quoted back in, when we started this, it may be a little bit more expensive, but it pulls a lot less voltage, and it, the duration, that it can last as much, a- at least double. So we're going back, and that's what most of, uh, these display, Yukon, Chickasha, most of them are going to straight LED for those reasons.
Uh, I've seen they're also giving quotes, if you've already purchased one, and once you're switched out to LED, they're, they're letting, if people want to, you know, donate for the upkeep.
Great point. Uh, I, I know of twenty-five, you know, displays so far, that the people that originally purchased them, uh, noticed that they were be- beginning to age, and they've gone back and said, hey, can you please take it and rewire it with the LED lights? And they are doing that, so twenty-five of them will be rewired for next year, so it's, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna look really nice, we're excited about that. Uh, if you've followed the news lately, uh, you probably have heard about, uh, what Seminole State is going through in terms of, uh, the chancellor of education, and the fact that, uh, there is a potential for our, uh, college to be absorbed into another colleges, under the direction of another college's board of directors. And, uh, we are doing what we can to, uh, avoid that from happening. We've been in, in deals before where, uh, we get absorbed into a metropolitan area, and all of a sudden, we're not as important to them as we were to ourselves, so, uh, we're doing what we can to combat that. Uh, I wouldn't say that we're actually fighting over it, but I, I think it's worthy of us getting involved and trying to s- keep that from happening. We need local control of our own college, so we're participating in that, and, uh, I may ask some of you to help us on that. I don't think it's necessarily a resolution-type deal, it's just something that I think, uh, individual council members can participate in at some level, so that's an important thing. Uh, the high school continues to have significant, uh, work done on it. Uh, we did receive plans, what, was it, the, last week, wasn't it, for the, uh, they have asked, and I think this is a great deal, uh, they are going to be adding six additional classrooms that were not in the original plans. So I think that's fantastic, uh, that, what I was told is that they're, they had anticipated an increase in enrollment, and, uh, they're already there. They would already feel the current, the high school that's being built would already be full if, if they moved in it today, so. Uh, they've added six more classrooms, we're reviewing the plans, and, uh, trying to go from there, but we're really excited to be helping our, uh, our part of it, which is the sewer and water, continue there, our guys are on schedule and doing well. Uh, you know, a lot of good things are happening. I met with another commercial developer today, uh, so, uh, the more activity we seem to have, the, the more it, it leads to, so we're really, really excited about the great things that are happening. I wanna say lastly, uh, that I wanna congratulate and thank each and every one of you for your service, and congratulations on being, leading us to the Purple Heart community, I think that's a big, big deal. And before I go, because my time is not up, I want to, if, if you don't mind, can you pass, pass those around? Um, I've mentioned on a couple of occasions that we're going to be resurfacing with the help of Department of Transportation, the Bourne Boulevard and the Broadway Avenue. Uh, effectively, it's going to be coming from the college all the way down to just past the bus station. So it's gonna be a significant overlay, it's gonna be a huge project, they're gonna be taking out bricks that are along the corridor in the main street area. So there will be, the only bricks that will be touched will be on Broadway, so we're not going north or south, we'll still have plenty of brick streets, but the bricks that carry the heavy loads will be, uh, will be taken up and, and relayed with concrete. So, what I, if you have any leftover, I don't know how many I, I did, you might just pass that to the crowd, Brad, thank you. So, our biggest concern, as you know, when ODOT finishes the project, this will no longer be a state highway that they do maintenance on. This will become the, uh, the, the problem of the City of Seminole. And so, we also know from the Department of Transportation that a fully loaded truck is the equivalent of ten thousand cars traveling over the same space. We cannot afford- We cannot afford to redo this overlay every three or four years like Department of Transportation does. We don't have three or four million dollars every three or four years, we just don't. So, we've been developing strategies, your staff and, and, we've been staffing this and trying to develop strategies on, well, how do we get the truck traffic off? How do we allow just local truck traffic to get in, but not have the huge, uh, huge haulers and, and loaded-down trucks travel down a city street, which is what this is going to be? We talked a lot, and have talked at the Planning Commission about stop signs, and, yeah, that's, that's fairly effective. I mean, if we put enough stop signs up, the trucks will certainly start avoiding that. But, we don't wanna affect our citizens in such a negative way if we can help it. So, one of the ideas that I would like to advance to you, and this is certainly not an action item to now, tonight, I wanted to put it in front of you to give you time to think about this. One of the things is, we've got a lot of England influence in our community right now, so, uh, we thought about maybe having roundabouts, and so, I've asked our engineer to provide us with the idea of putting a roundabout in a couple of different spots. So, what you've got in front of you right here is, uh, if you'll, if you'll turn it with the, the large picture on the top, that is right in front of the Willis Quick Stop storage buildings. So, if, at the corner of Harvey and, uh, Broadway, you'll, you know where Willis Quick Stop is, and we would be backing off of that intersection. That will, that intersection will have a traffic light, it will now be signaled after ODOT leaves. What we would like to do is back off of that, maybe one or two hundred yards, and create a, a choke-down roundabout is, is really what it equates to. So that the trucks will be able to see it from the intersection, that they will not proceed further than the intersection, and if they do, there's not enough room in this roundabout for them to proceed. They would have to turn around in the, in the area there. So, I think, you know, the, the trucker may make it, make that mistake one time, but word will travel quickly that that is no longer a pass-through. So, if you'll, if you'll go down to the bottom two pictures, uh, another idea that has surfaced is we, we could use another roundabout at the corner of Strather and Boren Boulevard. So, right in front of the USA Tank building that we just discussed, we would be looking at a, a, what we're calling a residential roundabout. So, what that means is, it's tight enough in this roundabout that a truck cannot pass, and we'll, we'll have to choke that down, and, and we'll put plenty of notification. The good news is that it does leave, uh, Ideal Street. You'll, you'll remember that we, we did all of Ideal Street and all of, um, Broadway as it leaves the corner of Broadway and, and Boren. If you go west toward the Housing Authority, that is all, you know, done in industrial road. It was built as an industrial road. So, companies like Blue Wave, Beaver, uh, what's the holler that, that, uh?
Beaver Express.
Beaver Trucks, okay. They will still be, be able to get in and out, it's just gonna be a little more painful for them to go down to the, they'll have to travel down Ideal Street and Boren, and then out onto ninety-nine. So, that's the best ideas that your staff can come up with. We're, obviously, we're open, and I, I think at some point, you'll probably want to have a public hearing on the subject, but this, to me, for the money, it's a one-time solution that'll save our streets about twelve years, in my opinion. So, uh, in terms of pricing, I, I got prices from Brandon Wall, our engineer today. Uh, the pricing for the one on top is actually, even though it's, it's got fewer entries into it, it's actually more expensive because of this, of this shoulder work that we'll have to do. Uh, that would run us about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, which is a fraction of what it would cost to overlay the rest of it. The, the one on the bottom left would be a hundred and eighty-four thousand, and the one, if, now, the bottom two are either or, you only need one of those. Uh, the one act- at the actual intersection is the cheapest, and that's a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to do a roundabout right there. Uh, that's the one I'm gonna recommend, uh, eventually to you guys, at a minimum, to do that one. Mike really, Mike Grant really would love to have the other one up by Willis Quick Stop. Uh, he's kinda worried about, you know, what's gonna happen that, uh, down by the bus station, because they, when they come through fully loaded and they take that corner a little bit quicker, because it's no longer gonna be brick, it's gonna be smooth now, so they're gonna take it even quicker. And you, you put that eighty thousand bu- a pound load on that turn, and we're gonna start having some damage. So he would prefer that we stop that closer to the Willis Quick Stop, so. I just wanna leave that with you, it's not necessarily a discussion item, that's just part of my report, and that's all I have.
City attorney?
Yeah.
Ward one, Larry Church.
Empower women. I just can't emphasize that enough, I've been proven worldwide to be the fastest route to happy, healthy communities with reduced crime and increased prosperity. Empower women, especially women with children. And I'd like to thank all of our veterans. Appreciate y'all very much. Even when I was in the army with you. Thank you very much.
Ward two, Stephanie Lambert?
I actually like the roundabout thing. I, well, because you, sometimes you set that stop sign forever, it's like, I don't like it, yeah. But sometimes you set that stop sign forever, waiting for traffic to clear one way or the other, and it's like, this is Seminole, not Oklahoma City. And then, but, you know, it'd be nice to just go in and just move on through, but, um, the ones again, thank you guys, thank you Carl for bringing that up, and thank you guys for coming. My, um, my uncle was a Purple Heart recipient, and my, both my grandfathers, um, served in World War Two, and my, my dad and all his brothers, they all served in some form of military, and, uh, my dad was in the Vietnam War, but he ended up being, is getting sent to Korea during the Vietnam War, which is, you know, good for him. But, um, so, um, thank you guys very much, and you guys are really, you know, close to my heart, and thank you for all that you do, Carl, you know that, I've thanked you millions of times. And, um, thank you guys, Sharon and all you guys at the city, you know, thank you guys so much for everything that you guys did with all of the little events, because almost every event, I saw someone from the city out there doing something, or Cory, you know, um. So, but other than that, you know, thank you guys so much for all that you're, you're doing for this town, and making it a good place to live.
Ward two, John Kramer? Ward three, Tim Poplin?
It's all pretty much been said, but thank the American Legion, you know, everybody's said that, but, you know, our veterans mean a lot to me, because our family's been in them. I was one-on-one on the draft, and they stopped it at ninety-eight, so I went and got my job back and took the for sale sign out of my car, but, uh, I, I appreciate the veterans very much, thank you all.
Cory Crabtree?
Uh, to the veterans, thank you for your service as well. For the record, Stephanie, I don't hate the roundabouts. This one may actually remind me to slow down to thirty miles an hour before I hit that spot. Not that I've been stopped or anything, but.
Ward four, Chris Hansen? Ward four, DeeDee Patterson?
Well, Steve, you're sitting always ahead of me. I was gonna talk about stop signs, because we need to replace a lot of our stop signs. We're always ahead of them, that's why you drove them.
Gonna take them all out and put roundabouts several places.
Do I have a motion for adjournment? All in favor? Those opposed?